Yeah.
Everybody had a chance to go through claims.
Yeah, like I said, the lawsuit you guys explained it, the other was a spell here. Said, I guess we can talk to Doug. Maybe they need to start changing their own oil. But it's done, it's over with.
Yep.
And IT, like I said, he ain't here, so.
Yeah.
But I know Derek, it's legit. I was just curious what it's for.
Motion to approve.
Prove the agenda minutes and claims.
Mr. Casey, you second that?
Second.
I have a motion in second on the claims. And the agenda and the minutes.
Did you guys talk about the Mid-American Energy for the four supervisors? It's got thirteen oh eight twice. Very first page. Looks like it's doubled.
Okay then. You got two meters there? You got one for the front, one for the back of the old part?
I'll be right back.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm gonna say it's a meter charge, because it's.
It looks like it's doubled. It looks like it's put in twice, so.
We're done? Be the same account?
Well, the front part's twenty seven ninety nine, yeah, the next one's twenty eight hundred.
Well, there is two there, you gotta go across the tracks. There's a meter outside.
They would be exact same numbers for everything.
Yeah.
Thirteen oh eight, thirteen oh eight is twenty six sixteen.
It went to the same account.
But it's all the same number for the invoice.
Yeah, if it went to the same account, it would be the same number.
But you're not gonna have the exact same electricity or.
That is, that's just a meter charge.
It's just to have the juice, or just to have.
It's not, not for electric, that's for probably, yeah.
There gotta be some sort of electricity used there in a month.
It is some electric, I don't think it's meter charge.
Or is it propane?
Mid-American is not deal propane.
Mid-American, the natural gas. Or electricity.
Well, you got in a nasty fight, Phil.
Yeah.
You lost.
I lost.
What you have done, Phil?
Had a surgery on my hand.
Did they also?
That same thing, Donnie has. Everybody got his rap.
Yeah.
Same damn thing.
Is it really? Yeah, that was a kind of a tough surgery.
Yeah.
They tell you the same thing, you can't drive for, you couldn't drive for X amount of days?
No.
They didn't tell you this?
No.
No. Otherwise, he wouldn't be here.
Don't make sense your hand, you still got the other one to drive with.
I'm right here.
So why'd you fix the left one then?
That.
Yeah.
They're doing good argument.
It says right on there, fuel, so I'm pretty sure it's a meter charge for or natural gas.
Be where we got one and got another one. Yeah, maybe two seconds.
I think the other thing I was gonna ask about was the taxes, but you might have been talking about that when I got.
It's for land.
That's for the county farm or?
Well, no, I think most of that for county farm. And one of them's for, the last one is a Tiff district in the city that county owns something.
Where?
You didn't ask Connie, she just said it was in the city of Elbona, and it was six dollars because of the Tiff district. And if you wanted to know more, we had to talk to Nick, and he's not here today. Okay.
That's my thing. Sorry. Thank you.
Should we scratch one of them?
Yes.
Yes, I'll adjust it for a moment.
Oh, all those in favor say aye.
Are you amending the motion?
Yes, second the amended.
Oh, sorry, yeah, we'll second it.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
You not saying, Dick?
I did. I was gonna say on the other side.
Robert does, so I just want to hear your signature.
Put it over on the other side, but.
Page vote for twice, you have two seconds.
I had twice.
Just one panel?
He's got another one coming here, well.
Yeah, so they're not the same. They're, they're, they're two different ones. Um. Mine is. Sorry, I had to go back and pull them out and look at them.
Ones, ones for each side of the track.
Yeah.
One side, one for the other building.
Yeah. So, well, this one says Paul Street, that's Philip, so. I don't know, Melissa just explained to me which, which way they were. But they are definitely the same price.
Well, yeah, it's just a meter charge.
Yes, okay.
Yeah, it's just a meter charge.
Yeah.
Two different meters.
Yeah, okay, okay, thank you.
Yeah. So you have to go back to the original motion? Does your original motion stand, John?
Okay, we'll go back and amend the motion on the Agenda Minutes and Claims.
I'll second that.
And approve it to the original claims.
So Jack, and Casey, your original motion stands?
Yes.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Donna, you're up. Yeah.
And is to set the resignation of her mental health advocate. She submitted her resignation. I guess we technically got it Thursday. We're doing an exit interview of September one third, you'll get the annex.
Yeah, so much people interested, huh?
It hasn't been posted yet.
Oh, wait.
I'm sure it's posted.
We, we, we need a mental health advocate.
Or mandated. Or mandated to have.
Right. So you're gonna post for that position? Everybody acknowledged that?
Yeah.
And I need a motion to approve the resignation of the mental health advocate, and I would so move. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Stacker. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Hold, motion carried unanimous. Anything else on the subject?
Last time we did have an intern, intro advocate, Abby Walling did it. I would want to reach out, just to see if she would.
I think that would probably be appropriate.
It's her last day today.
It was, ready.
I think she thought she was done Wednesday, when she sent the resignation to them. I got it Thursday, when she thought I was done.
So she turned her phone and computer.
She did not. I did ask her to bring it, she was gonna bring it to me Thursday.
I think, I thought she got it printed too.
Yeah, she probably did give it to me. I don't know if it actually came, but I think they.
Yeah, I was in here when they were sending it up.
Okay.
But she's had an email that said she was gonna bring it in last week.
She did say she was gonna bring it in Thursday, and I did not see her.
We'll keep checking.
Checking, hopefully she brings it one thirty to.
Is it, is it in our handbook for two weeks' notice or anything specific?
It's not mandated, it's suggested, but we have had other people, now just something, we're meeting, handbook committee is meeting Wednesday, eight thirty, and section two point two is where we're gonna start. Some wording that could. But, but, you know.
I think she was a little confused, that she thought she could do both jobs for a while.
I'm not sure.
It was what it sounded like. Well. Yeah, keep us informed, posted. Thank you, Donna.
Thanks, I've got something else.
Oh, you do?
Sorry. Um, we have talked about the safety, um, meeting, the annual safety meeting on October tenth, which is a Monday, Columbus Day. Um, I've kind of done two sketch. Well, I guess there's three agendas, but the, the first two are like three hours, and then we rotate staff. Getting into distracted driving, slips, trips, and falls, and harassment, which are requirements that we do, at least that I know that we do annually, or that was the distracted driving, the slips, trips, and falls. Or come audit, recommended those, harassment is a policy, I believe, that we're supposed to be offering. Just giving a brooding blurb on the Hope and Action Plan, which is just going to the CDC website. We are ordering fire escape ladders for your office, this floor and the next floor. And then Krista talked about stop the bleed, and then our law enforcement presentation, where they talk about courthouse safety. I guess the, the ultimate thing is the last page is if we were to do a full day for the staff. We would throw in the cybersecurity CPR, go to an actual demonstration of courthouse security versus just the presentation. Those times are a little fluid. I started the breakfast earlier, because wellness said they would do it like on the breakfast. Then, kind of got timeframes. Mr. Holmes out there is going to speak. Glenn from the I State Patrol, don't have his last name, I'm sorry. Derek would do the cyber. I sell, and Chris Lawson, which I got the fire escape ladders. Krista would do stop the bleed CPR. And then Duffy Rabbit Maker and Company would do the law enforcement presentation. Guess the ultimate question today is, do you prefer a string through the rotations? Cut out a few things, or do the whole thing?
So you mean being open, get closed?
Closed. Would probably be if we did the, if we did the full day, we'd be closed, because all the staff would be, that are here. I know there's one department that already has a training uptown, and we're not gonna ever get everybody to.
I was told that it's a court day.
Yeah.
It is, but it's not.
It's a courthouse, it's a court day.
Yeah. But it's just, yeah, and I did talk to TME and then Taylor. That's why we would do the Tuesday afternoon presentation. I guess the staff on these two floors would be over at the election building.
The only problem even with the afternoon is that's, I have no idea. Usually my, well Stephanie and my work are done in the mornings, but they still have civil matters due. So the court will be in session all day. I can't tell you if there'd be anything scheduled for the.
That was kind of, this was kind of fluid, because we've talked to TME and Taylor on.
Yeah, I, I should be able to get away to do the presentation, but I don't know if I'll close it. And that's my concern.
We don't necessarily have to close the courthouse.
You don't have to, that worked. I think it just would be staff would be all day at that training, and then it would be very, we would have to be sensitive to what the demonstration law enforcement wants, if we were to do that in the afternoon. If we were to do it, or they could just go to each, they are at each office.
Isn't it gonna be like that thing running around the courthouse, shooting it up? Um. You know, one of the things that the important is to have, obviously, the clerk's office involved.
Right, and that's what I, I talked.
That can be maybe later in the afternoon. Typically, again, I can't speak for October tenth, but typically, you know, there's less in the later afternoon.
Yeah, and that was what we put it at three. Turned about two ten to three. Or later, but.
Well, on that, on that third page, you got law enforcement presentation from one to two, and then another demonstration.
The demonstration is in the afternoon, but that was starting at seven thirty, so again, I don't know if we'd probably get pushed.
You got it from one to four on that other page. Would that work out better for you, Todd? Do you think? In the afternoon?
My presentation?
Yeah.
Well, it's one, we would do the morning for half the staff.
Okay.
For three hours, and then rotate in the afternoon. So that the courthouse would keep, not only open, but be staffed.
The first two pages are the option if we're open.
If we're open.
The last page is if we're open.
And then when you say closed, it's saying so that all the staff would be over at the election building, not be necessarily here, but I was aware that it was district. District motion day. Didn't the fifth variety of the month, the clerks don't have anything, but that happens to be the thirtieth, and taxes are due, and Nick was pre admitting that, so. It, there's not gonna be a perfect time, and it might have to be adjusted. This is just kind of a general few thoughts. Where do we start? How do we go?
Heard you say CPR that day too?
Pretty.
CPR.
She was second part of the meeting last week, and brought up, especially stop the bleed. It's like she was gonna decide. The ten.
Is there a different day that would work for everyone?
If you could find that perfect day, I, I'd give you that, I'd give you that grace to do that. I don't know that we will ever find a perfect day to do it. And again, I'm not saying this is a perfect agenda, but I thought if I had something to start with, we could destroy it or scratch it, or say, yeah, or nature.
Were you open on October ten?
Yeah, that's.
We are open.
We, that's why we picked that day, is because a lot of people don't know we're open, because it's a holiday, so it's usually, it's usually a lighter traffic day, but.
But it's not, it's not a guarantee, and then we do have the motion day, so it's, it's a fair, Alex, I mean.
It's a good day, because there's not a lot of people coming here.
It's not, I don't, again, I don't want to huddle them.
Is, the court don't take the plum stay off?
We don't officially, I don't, yeah. It's just kind of one of those. And I don't think we're gonna get anybody to come in like on a holiday. When we are just supposed. So.
So which, what's your pleasure?
I would lean more towards the first two, keeping things open that way, for anyone that does come in or, or the all of these other tools is.
That'd be my choice. Casey?
We're showing.
I have no deep.
I have, I don't care.
Be hold to either.
It sounds like majority'd like to do the half a days.
And rotate.
Yeah.
And then whoever can come, we are not gonna get it for everybody. You can do the mandatory meetings. I don't think that that's ever worked. That's all I needed.
Okay, thank you, Donna.
You made a decision on it?
No, if we were gonna close, we would, but since we're gonna, we're the same.
Thank you.
EMS.
We got the reasons for that vehicle?
Yep.
Um, I've been trying to get bids for that.
Good luck.
Yeah, I did give most from Kim, was they did give me a bid. Official bid, it's just. I did check the slow places, I checked Carl's, straightaway down to eight eight. Carl's been done, he gave me a bid. So, I have one bid. Which guy is waiting, want me to do?
It's in the county?
Yes.
If you, if you tried, that like said something.
I, I think you just accept a bid.
I have the emails from Carl's, I can keep on file, that shows they declined the bid.
Yeah, that, at least, at least you've locked in period. I mean, with the supply chain, the way it is, you can do what you can do.
Right. And this would be, you know, the amount of money that we received, so. Right there.
Do you think we need a motion on the searches from Ken? I think we should have a motion.
Yeah, do you have the paperwork?
Yeah, I do. Get everybody a copy of it.
We have, we have the.
Yeah.
Fifty four, four ninety five.
What kind of vehicle was it?
It's a twenty twenty three Chevy Suburban. LS four wheel drive. But it's cost seats.
So we have fifty four, four ninety five, twenty twenty three Chevy Suburban LS four wheel drive. The motion would be to approve such vehicle.
I'd make that motion.
Stacker next motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Clap. Any discussion? Hearing now, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Hold, motion carried unanimous. Thank you, Phil.
Thank you. You guys won't be, you know, you're talking this, so you have, after that, or just.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep, Todd, you're up. Regarding DD seven?
Yes. Um, last week, I had a conversation with an attorney who does a lot of plaintiff's work for legal malpractice actions. His name is Max Kirk, Ball Kirk and Holt, Holt, he dwells in Waterloo, Iowa. Uh, and he wanted me to send him a copy of the, like, plaintiff's motion for some judgment, so I did. And then we had a discussion about it, and he, his thoughts on it were that, um, he would, uh, he wouldn't think that it would be advisable to go forward with a legal malpractice action. And, and when you look at this, you look at it from the standpoint of, okay, let's don't make the determination as to whether or not there was or there wasn't. Let's look at the, the reality of the situation. Uh, he said that the, the case, uh, if it were to go forward, would be highly defensible based upon, you know, the series of events that occurred. That an attorney who represents, uh, a client, whether it be a board, whether it be a drainage district, or whether it be, be an individual, uh, does it on mainly contingent fee of forty percent. Um, and that's, uh, that's just the attorney's fees. You'd have to throw the the expenses on top of it, since it's highly defensible, uh, in his opinion, uh, that means that it's probably gonna go at least from the outset, you have to expect it to go the distance, which would be quite expensive, uh, and given the potential recovery, um, that he did. And I, and I agreed with him in my discussion with him, that it, it didn't sound like it was, uh, one to pursue. But he said, he also said that I'm sure you could find an attorney out there that would do it, but you have to look at it from the economics as to whether or not that would be uh, the thing you'd wanna go forward, but, uh, you have to also look at the fact that, you know, if it's, uh, uh, defensible, uh, then, you know, it's questionable whether you're gonna be collecting at the end, and if you add more to the drainage district expenses, it may not be a good idea.
You don't think the people, DD seven would be very happy if we had a big attorney?
Probably not.
We said on top of that, another hundred thousand.
We got into the details, but I'm not going to share them, um, publicly, can do it in a closed session if you want, but, uh, I don't think that that's probably necessary.
Yeah, no. Thank you, Todd, we appreciate it.
No problem. Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, sorry it took a little while, but.
Well, that's all right.
We're all busy, so. Yes.
We have a proclamation of natural, National Voter Registration Month.
The Secretary of State's Office sent all the county auditors, um, this proclamation, asking that the board supervisors approve it, because September is National Voter Registration Month. It would like you guys to.
Casey, you're, you're up.
I'd make.
You wanna make the motion? Means that you've got competition. Mr. Casey makes a motion. Do I have a second? I'll second it. Do a roll call vote?
Second.
Yes.
Casey?
Bill.
Clap?
Yes.
Jax?
Yes. You brought up. Okay, we are up to approval of ARCA funds for transfer switch for the jail generator, handicap automatic doors in the annex building, and repair of sheriff's office inbound building.
So the ARCA committee approved all three of those. The first one is, is the door openers. There's two of them for the entrance door and the inside door, because right now, there's nothing, and they're heavy doors. The second one is a transfer switch for the law enforcement generator. It's going out, so we're gonna have to replace it, so this is just whether it comes out of ARCA funds or it comes out of the sheriff's budget. And then, um, the building that Roger Fisher is gonna be using as an inbound building out at the UBC building, needs insulation and, and a bunch of stuff. He was originally given the twenty five thousand dollars for the live scan through ARCA funds, but then got a grant, so didn't use this. So this is actually extra twenty five thousand, and that was already awarded to him. It's just gonna be for a different purpose. So instead of the live scan, it's gonna be for that.
Is there any questions?
I don't have any questions, but discussion wise, as far as the, um, automatic door openers on the end, is how much cheaper would it need to be for us to use a different local contractor for that?
But it's from the American glass.
There'd be more for the vets on, right? It's just on the end, it'd be more for the vets.
Yeah, and some of the people. It has come in.
I like seeing it. Let's hit the vets one, and they're, you know, you're helping two entities, so.
No, yeah, it's a local company doing it. They've done, they've done a lot of the workforce, and got some problems that we had other outside people.
They're the ones that fixed the doors, right?
Yeah, they did it, right?
Yeah, I'm talking about another local one. There's two in town here.
Don't know there's.
So how much cheaper would it need to be for you guys to use that, percentage wise?
Last time, you didn't even give us a bid, so.
Actually, he did. He gave it three times.
Well, no, it wasn't presented to us.
Well, it wasn't presented here, but there's three of them. I'm pretty sure I still have forgotten two.
Well, the bid don't come into this real.
It's a new plan, if they don't receive it, so.
It was, it was sent to our employee that was handling.
Never got in here.
I'm aware of that.
I'll move the week, you see ARCA fund. I'll move the we, you see ARCA funds for the.
Motion by class. Second, I'll second it. Any other discussion?
Um, I got price from the other local contractor in town here, and it was substantially lower.
Did he know what the other company bid? You told them what they bid?
Nope.
What substantial?
I, I told him he was lower after he gave me a number, but I did not tell him the price, I never did.
So are you presenting that bid to the board today?
Oh, sure, it is forty-six hundred dollars instead of six thousand. You have over twenty percent cheaper.
That from Algonquin Glass.
Algonquin Glass. It says basically the same thing as the other one, that twelve volt power would need to be supplied. Because that's listed in the one from American. And it's both doors. I can print it off if you'd like a copy, I have it in email here, but.
Wow, I think we have a table, because it's not on the agenda, I don't read it here.
Well, it is under the ARCA stuff, it's in that resolution.
I do not see a bid from another company in front of me, I'm not voting.
Because it wasn't presented to you.
I'm not voting on it, as you know, I say I abstain because it's not in front of me. Would you three guys though?
Well, I think you can vote on two and take the one and table it till next week when we see two bids.
I would go for that, but I will not vote on the buttons on the door.
Yeah, but I think it would be all right to.
Well, you already made a motion for it.
We will.
Or I can withdraw it.
Yeah, we, Jack withdrew the motion and I'll withdraw the second. We'll start over. And the motion would be for twenty-five thousand, six hundred and thirty-nine dollars and fifty-six cents for the switch for the jail. Yeah, and the jail generator transfer switch, seven thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars, and the other one is for Roger Fisher's, I'm sorry, for the impound, impound building of twenty-five thousand, six hundred and thirty-nine dollars, fifty-six cents, they would both be for Roger.
They, uh, they withdraw them all then, because the other ones are from American Glass too.
The storage building, is it?
Just the one.
That's just, that's just the end.
It's just the end.
Yeah. And the generator is from Electrical Engineering Equipment.
That's the company that fixes it, that maintains it.
That's a place more specialized.
Jack, do you want to make the second motion?
Yeah. Motion to approve the, the two.
I'll second it again. Any more discussion on the two items for ARCA funds? You will call both, please?
Becker?
Yes.
Casey? Flack?
Yes.
Jerks?
Yes.
We gotta, we gotta redid it. I would send the bids though.
Yeah, we gotta open it back up.
And I want that bid sent to you.
Yep.
Okay.
Dog.
They, they both have to redo it.
Then they, then they gotta both be requested the same.
That, that I will request.
Yes, be redone.
Whatever, be interesting to see where the prices come back next.
Well, everybody knows everybody else's price now, so.
Yeah, just making note that American Glass did say a product.
At least on a hit, with the head on there, Doug is one forty-one.
It says install six thousand.
Says not to minimum.
No, on the resolution, it says approximately, not on their quote.
You got a problem with American Glass for some reason, like a.
Oh, I had a problem with how the last thing went down for the doors and how that was handled.
That's the end.
From the D company.
One of one.
Yeah. Doug, can you come up?
Aye.
Other than Todd. Yep. No, this other thing that are confusing.
We take this resolution, taking the openers off, and, um, you guys can stick around signing for, we today morning.
If you guys want to vote on it, go ahead, there's three of these, I'm just not going to.
I don't have a problem accepting the low price, but.
Well, I, I think the same person should get bids. And have the standards of what they want. Every, everybody can go out and get bids from everybody.
Did you tell them this bid was six thousand, the other company?
No, I already said that. One more to everyone.
Expect sheet for that.
Oh, the six thousand, yeah, yes, it's in there.
It, it says two auto operators for one dash INT, whatever, can't really read that. And then it says one exterior door with wireless push buttons, twelve volt power to the operators by others. And he said twelve volt power would need to be supplied by someone else, and then tossed out a price because he said he had just done them for someone else here recently, so he had to figure it out off the top of his head. I never shared what the other number was.
So what's your, you gotta make sure, if someone else is supplying the other juice, make sure you get that person with the bid, because it's American Glass doing both things.
It leaves somebody else to supply.
Both of them. Say, because there's a. Both of them are going to get an electrician's supply.
Yes, both, both would need someone else to supply power. That's the only thing I told him, I told him it's two openers.
I included the electrician.
No, they both said powered by others.
I, I think Will told me that he got that bid, that they, that's not with the electrician that's supplied, so.
So everything's getting more high priced. Are you ready, Doug?
Whenever you guys are.
They're ready.
Ready.
Uh, yes, uh, our five-year pro, construction program, we have a bridge and in your folder, um, it's located right to the north and a couple miles east of Wesley on P sixty-four, it's in our program, we are planning to let that, uh, this December. Um, started reviewing our engineer's estimate and the price that we had programmed for that. And our engineer's estimate is quite a bit higher than what we had money programmed. We had four hundred thousand dollars program, our estimate is five hundred seventy-seven, five hundred seventy-eight thousand dollars. So I'd like to change, I'd like to amend the program. Uh, this is money that would be federal bridge funds and farm to market funds, it does not affect our local money at all. Uh, if we do not, uh, amend our program and uh, go ahead and let the bridge, we would only be eligible for the amount of federal funds I had programmed. So it's just a formality right now, we did get our agreement on this. Part of this is, uh, this originally was part of the swap program, but now we are moving away from the swap program. And going back to, uh, complete federal aid, and that is one of the reasons we need to get this taken care of. Like the board to act on the, uh, resolution that was attached in here. Folder.
During the resolution.
How many years?
Thank you.
You have oh nine, oh six, twenty-two, oh two. It'll be the resolution to increase the amount on the five-year program to six hundred thousand, is that correct?
That is correct, yes. Not specific range.
There a little verse six and blocked up?
No, it would be P sixty-four, so it goes from Highway eighteen north to Titanca.
So it goes by Morse's cattle setup?
That would be correct, yeah.
Right on the other corner of Wildlands and Pearson's going on?
Uh, this would be the east.
The north.
The south.
South of there.
The furthest south bridge.
It'd be true.
Particular stretch of road.
Because the great farm, the other side is, um, no friends.
Uh, no, that's, uh, that's a box covert that's already been let, this, this is only about two miles north of Highway eighteen. That was north of the road is a little over a bird.
Yeah.
One to your top.
So we just build by Nygaard's farm, for just past Nygaard's.
Baltimore, yeah.
Okay, this is the dark, south one I mean to.
Yeah, this would be the first south on that particular stretch.
Were they built at the same time, those two bridges?
Yeah, those were, all three of those bridges were all built at the same time. That was the DOT.
Yeah.
Road, yeah.
Two twenty-six.
Correct.
New two twenty-six.
New.
Say it like that.
Yeah, we have resolution number oh nine, oh six, twenty-two, oh two, to increase the funding for bridges to six hundred thousand, do I have a motion for that? Removed, motion by class, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Stecker, any discussion? Hearing now, do a roll call vote.
Yes.
Casey?
Yes.
Flack?
Yes.
Jerks?
Yes.
You mail that.
Thank you.
Tanner?
Thank you. You get some aid options.
Could we get that signed by your campaign? I'll get it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Banmore Dairy is next.
Yes, uh, we've had a request, uh, from Banmore Dairy, they operate pretty large facility down in the southwest corner of pursuit county. Uh, they had asked for and received, uh, permission for setback building to the east there, part of the dairy operation, and they are asking uh, for fifty-five foot from the road right away, this would be for a calf bedding. A confinement barn. Uh, Iowa Department of Natural Resources requires one hundred feet of distance from the road right away. I do not have any concerns with the road department, but it should be, uh, also acted on by the board supervisors.
Well, parlor's already fifty foot, so.
Pardon me?
Right to the east of the house with existing parlor is fifty foot, correct?
That is correct, yes.
We have a resolution oh nine, oh six, twenty-two, oh three, to approve the setback. Mr. Casey, would you make that motion?
Yes, so.
I have a motion by Mr. Casey, do I have a second? I'll second it. Any discussion on the resolution? Hearing now, do a roll call vote, please?
Second?
Yes.
Casey?
Do.
Flack?
Yes.
Jerks?
Yes. Motion approved.
To be true, and then again, I will email those to you. Thank you.
Interstate power.
Construction of the road right away, yes, uh, interstate power has requested uh, to bore underneath of three hundred street from the north road right away. Uh, there is some sort of a, a construction of a grade at that they are boring for electricity there here. Nothing is going to be placed in the road right away. I would recommend the board approve of this, a request from Interstate Power by.
I would move to approve, do I have a second? Second, record that plant, any discussion on Interstate's proposal? Hearing now, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Close, motion carried.
To the chair here, Roger, please.
All right, thank you.
All the requests for uh, construction in the road right. Just to bring up everyone up to date on some construction. The bridge at the Big Six elevator, they are putting guardrail on today, or they are scheduled to be putting guardrail on today, we've not been up there verify that, so that should be, uh, open, we are going to leave the approaches uh, rock for the winter, let that sit through the winter and settle, get good packed in, and then next year we will come back and pave all of that.
Sure, will we stop sign at the intersection?
There's two, uh, north-south roads are stopped.
Are you gonna to the east and west that, you're gonna put a slow sign bump?
We will put bump with speed advisories on that, yes. Good question.
Well, I went through there this weekend, and it was pretty rough going north and south.
Well.
I didn't go east and west, but I went north and south.
That, uh, yeah, we'll have to, I'm sure with some traffic, we're just gonna have to maintain that. Make sure that that gets gets maintained, I will, you know, make sure that gets done.
That bridge got a crown in the middle?
Pardon me?
That bridge got a crown in the middle?
Yes, it explodes.
That's why the guardrail looks like that, to the concrete guardrail, because you look at it down on the north side, it looks like.
Oh. It is on a vertical curve, yes.
Said this, I didn't look at the base, but I looked at.
I'm very sure it does.
I, you could see that, it was definitely.
I have, I have to look at that too, but it is on a vertical curve, so yes, the height point would kind of be in.
You can't tell you moved it, it looks like it's the same spot, danger.
Really?
I couldn't really tell, I thought you were gonna move it when you said you're gonna move a bridge.
Oh, it's been moved. You have to trust me, yes.
The water's gonna go underneath the bridge.
Well, ours.
So much. That's, that was the plan.
The Fairfield Road, if anyone's been up there, as far as Cassup County, everything is done except for CD and traffic marking, so they've got everything, shoulders brought all up and everything, so.
I heard it was smooth.
Yes, it is.
You're gonna take the Big Six crew and take them down to Irvington now, so we can get that one done?
Uh, maybe I should ask one contractor to don't even, to sub out to the other contractor.
That was a little slow.
The Irvington Bridge, as you have the, on the west side.
Not as slow as they are over here on Highway 18. Oh, man. They might not get that done, they're just starting on the south half. Did you ever get to Springer?
What's that?
For the highway bridge?
Highway 8, 169?
Yeah.
Yeah, that I think is gonna get poured this week.
Is it?
Yes.
Also, it will get done this year.
Yes. A four-way bridge up at Titanca, they are moving pretty well up there. We have some, we've been taking a lot of photographs of that. So next week I'll put some photographs of that bridge in there, in your folder, so you get a good idea of what's going on there.
We're putting a bridge in there now.
Pardon me?
Putting a bridge in there now.
We're removing a bridge, putting in box culverts, so. I mean, but it'll be, it'll still be defined as a bridge because of the overall length of everything. But, no, that's a contractor there I've never really worked with, I'm impressed with, J.B. Holland. Resurfacing, we are verifying today, but they have told us September 19th is when they're gonna be moving in. And then we have the two wind projects going on, so we're watching that. Other than that, that's kind of everything that we have.
How long resurfacing gonna take?
Two to three weeks.
You're gonna be crowding right into Bean Harvards.
Yes.
So they'll be chastised again?
Yes.
Which road you gonna do first, the north side?
I think they're gonna do the one down by Laverne, that's six miles that they did cold in place on, they're gonna get it, get up top.
Like Cole House as you're talking, yeah. Terry Cole House.
Is that okay?
Then you're gonna do St. Bendic Road east and west, correct?
Correct, yeah.
And then you're gonna do up to Wesley.
That's correct.
You been down on that Gilbert front?
Yeah.
Those bumps sometime, but where, what is that? It wasn't there until
Well, when they, I think that's where the distributor of oil, and then they backed up and they overlapped just a little bit.
So they got It's getting better, seems like
Yeah, I thought it was, I feel it lasted a week, yeah.
That first day when they got tell that it's It's
I think that'll come, that'll with everything. I, I believe so. Sometimes, those are the
You'll be driving that whole
Circumstances, when you go to repair one thing, you end up with another unforeseen circumstance.
When they get circus seven towers, I want to take that concrete to cure.
I'm surprised they're not, I
Great, you can sit, I don't, they've been sitting there over a
I know.
Good week.
I don't know, I, I, I don't believe the concrete is having any problems, so I think out here, anything five to seven days, I think seven, that's all compressive. That's what concrete is, is that compressive strain.
With that one on the once and feel, holy cow, did I get some weights on that bad boy?
Yeah.
A lot of weights on
Have you been up to the ones up at Lead Yard?
Drill by
Grains or whatever, very large
Those are 600 footers, right, minor
Right, right. All right. Anything else? So don't, welcome back, you have your vacation.
Wonderful, every glacier good, see Alaska, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a trip, it's probably like we said, we went, probably never go back again. It's one of those, take it, do it once, you know, once you see one glacier, you know, again. And it's very beautiful.
Good.
Weren't you seeing ice? You've seen ice?
Yeah. It was a good, good trip, I would recommend it to anybody.
We don't have any ice at Iowa.
Not, not in the summer. We're gonna have a beautiful winter with no snow.
As long as we get cold temperatures, I'm getting ready, I got the, I got the itch to go ice fishing.
That sure tastes better. What, the ice in the Now I fish through the ice, it's cold, firm instead of squishy.
No, let's see, I got my migration lined up, I think.
Be back at quarter hour.
Get ready for ice.
You got your four wheeler all, or your side by buck?
Not, yeah, you got one.
He got a pop stand, too?
As soon as you hear, I'm a good deal for me, let me know.
Good deal.
Yeah, I'm always looking for good deals, they're hard to find right now, boy, they are.
Thank you.
I'll be warming up, it's cool.
Yeah, so you got this four feet. Morning. Or I'm going against it. It's too good. Yeah. That's the Or I'm going, I'm following But it's Thank you.
Hey Jim, it's Kyle. How are you? I'm doing good. I got Dan on the phone and we're going to be starting, well, we're on break right now, but we'll be back on for drainage and the first thing will be that agreement with Minnesota. And then we'll be back here in about four minutes at a quarter after night. So I was just gonna get everything set up. If you're able to hang on the line, I'll have you on speaker. Yep. Well, that's good. Let me, let me merge the call. He's on right now. So just a second. Okay, do we have both of you on here? He might have stepped away from this phone. No problem.
Dan, if I have better chance to talk to Kyle. Kyle, you should go down. I talked quite a bit this morning.
Yep, and, and yeah, and we'll be back in session here in a couple of minutes and then we can go through all that. But yeah, that, that'll be good to discuss everything. If you guys wanna just hang out, I'll kinda have the phone on here and then when everyone's back in, I'll put it on speaker and we can have a discussion from there. So just hang on for a couple of minutes and we'll be back. Thanks.
The Johansons, they've been
Smile. She's always smiling. Of course, she's a happy person.
Most of the time. But I have to say I'm getting I know you guys have probably heard that the nation is wanting a, a recount from the 2020 election, including Iowa. And
Still?
Yeah, so I have to do some more research into the Iowa vote and waiting for a response by the Secretary of State. But I've been getting a couple of emails about it because the code says that, and I have to look at what it says, is that we have to or we can destroy records from the 2020 election after 22 months. So, but I've been getting emails requesting other information from the machines that, that the Secretary of State's office says should not be releasing and then requesting that not destroying those records. So we're waiting for responses and I have to look and see what the wording is.
Yeah, well, who can request a recount like that for the nation?
It has to be, well, I think it has to happen each day.
Cause each state has different ways that they do their election.
What if you only get 30 states to say yeah and they're saying no?
Well, those 30 states, I think if it's approved, would have to be. So
I, I would think each state has autonomy of that, whether they do it or not.
Yeah, I don't know. This is new to me, so I'm learning, but
Marge?
What?
You're an expert on elections.
Sure.
Well, I'm just, just thinking out loud.
So for right now, I definitely sound up yet, but for right now, not doing anything but track these some televisions.
Clarification.
Twenty.
You can't election for the Obama army. Where's that Trump and the viability? They still want to get a boot it.
Getting people requesting hang on it. Not get rid of those Trump kids. That's 22 months. And I don't know if it shall be destroyed or can be destroyed. I'll have to
Talk one.
The emails are just, they're not asking for a recount. The emails I've done personally are not asking for a recount. They're just asking for me not to destroy people.
Yeah. But not in the nation's, doesn't matter.
So just to let you know, in case you're getting any questions or anything, for right now, I'm holding off until I find out when I'm supposed to be.
Well, we have Electoral College, so Electoral College did take a lot to change those polls.
Just don't want to destroy any records.
I don't, I think they ought to get old age myself. Move on. Marge, we have some requests.
Do you want to do?
Do I do landowner first?
I have, um, Dan and Jim had requests to be on the phone for this, so I got them on ready. Can you guys order?
Well, we are ready to reconvene and do drainage. So what do you have on the landowners for the needy?
I got, starting on the agreement here. I'll put you guys on speaker for the whole course here.
Thank you, Sean. Just, please don't.
Good. So we got Dan and Jim.
Am I on?
You're on.
Roger, this is Jim Hudson. Am I on?
Yes, you are, yeah.
Can I just make a quick comment? Um, I apologize to everybody that that agreement is so off. I didn't really understand the, uh, how this district was set up with PD-60 sub. One, I thought that was just a circular lateral, but it's not quite right. So some of the suggestions that I've received from Kyle and Dan, I think all should be incorporated and cleaned up. And, um, there's not much substance to that, but it just, it just makes it the right designation. The other thing that Dan has explained to me is, and, you know, I looked at four, five, six different concepts for this and I didn't keep them straight, but we're doing the one that we no longer are gonna run any Iowa tile up to and through the Johansson land. That little horsie that goes up above the Iowa-Minnesota line will be eliminated. So we will no longer run water through Minnesota. We'll bypass it. And I think that needs to be included in the agreement too.
I think he's gonna run water, run up to the Minnesota land.
No.
We're gonna give Johansson some support. They're running it through and through the county road.
Yeah, there, there
And then he can hook on on the Minnesota side.
No, but you're giving, you're giving Minnesota an outlet, yeah.
Yes. So just, just basically clarifying that and spelling it out a little bit better, which I can
Can we call that line the Minnesota lateral, I believe?
So it's, it's not a final draft by any means. It needs some cleanup, but, um, and the Johansons, well, we all kinda got it Friday, so they're gonna be looking it over and make sure it's acceptable or if they have any thoughts or whatever to it, but
Johansons are still going to, did you ever get a final number on that, Dan, or Dan's not on the phone?
Yeah, he's on there. I think it's eighty-some thousand. Eighty-two, eighty-three.
Yes, that sounds right. Um, I've got the numbers here somewhere, but yes, I've sent out a final number of that.
One of the things that we had discussed was we could potentially have that number be part, be figured based off the classification schedule and off the total when it's actually completed, because then if we have any change orders, those would be encompassed in as well, rather than the Iowa site getting the Florida end of the deck there.
Now, Dan, the tile, the coefficient on that tile, is that including the acres of Minnesota that are going into it?
Yeah. Dan, did you hear that?
No, what, what was the question?
Roger had asked if the coefficient for the tile was figuring the Minnesota acres.
Yes.
So
Johansons could upgrade that to get a half-inch coefficient on their farm and then the main tile is still handling.
Yeah, cause I think it goes through the road at a, is it an eighteen? And then on the other side of the road, it's a twenty-four for Ismann's and then drops down to the main. So, yep.
That's correct.
It's built to handle theirs.
The total amount for Johansson's at this point is eighty-six thousand, two hundred and sixty-six dollars and thirty-three cents.
Can you repeat that, Dan? Eighty-six?
Eighty-six, yep, eighty-six thousand, two hundred and sixty-six and thirty-three cents.
Dan, can you, Jim, explain to the board exactly what that means? And I need to hear it again.
Yeah, that's no problem. Um, so I tried to get as close to an all-in cost as I could. Um, so that's including, um, a quickly, quickly calculated interest. That's including bid cost. That's including engineering, uh, both before and after. Um, that's including some legal costs, televising. I also added in a five percent contingency on that. And it includes the amount that we are gonna deduct from their total bill at the end of the day.
And to explain that further, the portion they'd be getting deducted is for the tile that we will not build in their farm on the Minnesota side. We're only crossing the road.
Yep, tile that we would have had to build
Yep.
having gone all the way through their farm.
And, and I will include in the agreement that we're gonna abandon the tile that is there.
Yeah, I think that is in the agreement now.
So Johansson's still need an agreement that they can use the tile in Iowa though.
That's what this agreement would be, cause we'd provide the outlet across the road and they would hook into it.
I wanna explain to the board too. I, I won't go down bunny trails, but quite frankly, Johansson is not in the state of Iowa. He is not legally a part of this drainage district. And what we're doing is being a nice guy to him to let him hook into our system. But it's the best we can do because we're crossing a state line. So if our Iowa landowners and the board happy with that, how we do it, that's your thought.
Well, all the Iowa landowners wanted them to help pay for it, so that's the whole point.
They're gonna help.
Future maintenance, Johansson is still gonna pay any future maintenance on his allocated share. How can you justify that if he's not in the district?
There's a difference in it.
That's what
Cause this is our facility, so we can pay them the repairs. If he doesn't pay for repairs, I say we just disconnect him.
And that's, and that's where that would, that's in this agreement and legally, we can't just disconnect him right now because the tile was in their previous with nothing on paper. So we're setting it up for the future.
I didn't think you could disconnect him once that he's been connected to it.
Yeah, under Iowa law.
But
But he's not subject to Iowa law. He's gonna be subject to what we stand in this agreement.
Exactly. It, it changes the rules on it, basically.
That's putting some hairs and parching some words. Dan and I have discussed this too. This is all tile. So we don't anticipate any, anything being done for what, thirty, forty, fifty years?
Hundred.
Hopefully a hundred, but yeah.
Thirty years from now, uh, it's kinda like, what's the difference?
Someone else can worry about it then.
I'm trying to kick the can down the road, but I wanna get it as good as we can right up front.
Yeah.
And suggest how to do it in the future. And if you won't abide in the future, it won't be, uh, Doug and Steve, I don't think. It'll be their next owners.
Yeah.
Their heirs.
So you're gonna have it done by next week or what's the plan?
Well, everybody wants Johansson to have some input.
Yep.
And apparently he's, he's on vacation. When he gets back, he wants to have some input.
Okay.
And I'm assuming he'll contact Kyle or Dan or me, somebody. Then the board's gonna have to decide if his input is good or bad.
Jim, just a minor thing, but on number eight, uh, there's a typo there, uh, water.
There's typos all through there. I pushed my secretary so hard to get it out. That's why I'm apologizing. I know it needs to be cleaned up.
Yeah, there's, there's several things. Kinda, I guess, kinda the point of having it on the agenda here and everything is to make sure everyone on the board's in favor of the intent of the agreement and will move forward with cleaning it up and fine tuning.
Whatever is fine today, please mark it up on a copy and it's marked even. I wanna fix all those typos. I do not want anything like
So a couple of things, uh, Johansson's did email, send out an email and I also had a phone call with them. Um, it sounds like they would be, they'd be willing to, uh, get on any, any changes they want with, in the agreement either today or tomorrow. Um, so they, they should be back on it here pretty quick. Um, and then the, the two points that they wanted to talk about in the agreement was Um, and then the, the two points that they wanted to talk about in the agreement was, one, in regard to the maintenance, uh, just as we talked about. Um, I told them that we, that we definitely wanted to have, um, have them paying for future maintenance, um, and also that the likelihood of needing that would, is pretty low for the near term. That would be a long-term thing. Um, and then the second thing that they wanted to talk about was, um, what all is included in the agreement in terms of land? Now, if you look at the original district, the original district only included uh, fields that were on the south quarter of that section, uh, so the southeast, southwest, south, uh, the, the two southwest quarters, quarter quarters and, uh, one of the southeast quarter quarters. Um, there is one field just to the north of that that is part of the watershed that does have surface water draining towards our district. Now, I did not include that field in the pre-classification schedule, however, it does show up on one of the exhibits. Um, so they would like to have that land included in the agreement, but uh, in my mind, if, if we want to do that, then we'd probably ask for more money for that as well. Um, but I wanted to bring that up to the board and, and see what your thoughts were on that. Um, and we can figure out which direction to go with the agreement.
Well, if I was Johansson's, I'd take all the water I could down to this new tile.
But we might as well charge for everything we can.
Why wouldn't you, Dan? I mean, considering you have a good coefficient on this tile, and I have no idea what they have going north, probably not as much, so if I was gonna tile anything, I'd put everything to the larger coefficient.
See, I'm just looking at some areas to the north. Feel like there might've been a ditch or something.
So they have, I have no idea.
They've got a surface waterway to the north, but I don't know if they have a ditch.
You're gonna have to figure that out, Dan.
Figure what out?
What, what would be appropriate for Johansson's if they wanted to improve their drainage?
Well, yeah, so we wanna spell that out in the agreement.
Right.
You know, cuz it, we don't want the, if it's outside of the watershed, we certainly don't want them tying into it. So inside the watershed, do we, there's another, oh, five or six acres that they could potentially tie in. So do we want to allow those acres in, uh, and charge them extra for it, or do we want to just, just, uh, have it set, set up as the pre-classification schedule was, was set up?
This is, this is Jim. I think we should just follow exactly what we do in Iowa for classification. When we know that there is land outside the district, or even within it, that they're just producing, this is surface water, that's always that. So we've got five acres of sur- surface water that we haven't made any assessment for. I think that needs to be included upfront. Then if we discover later on that Johansson puts tile in and brings tile water into our system, then I think that needs to be altered in the assessment, uh, pain. Don't know how we're gonna know that, but very those, some of those landowners have the eyes on the ground. And I think it happens all over the place. If you're in the drainage district paying an assessment for benefits, you're in trouble to bring as much water as you can into the district clearly. It sounds like I've just gone in a circle, and basically I have, but we can only charge him upfront for what is in existence today, and if he adds tile to it, that extra forty acre tract is already included in the, the assessment area. So we only assess the five point three acres that are the benefit. If it brings in more tile, we'll assess him for that. Does that make sense?
Yep, I'm fine with that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Alright, so we'll, we'll go ahead and add those, those five, six acres on there. Uh, I will work on getting a number to that as quickly as I possibly can. Uh, we'll get that worked into the agreement.
Okay.
Alright.
Sounds good.
So then, then Jim, for expediency's sake, is this something that we'll need to bring? Is the, we're gonna go back and rework the agreement a little bit. Is this something that we're gonna need to bring to the full board? Uh, to get approved, or is this something that like, uh, Kyle or Roger could do, or, uh, what would that look like?
Well, if, if the board is in agreement today and tells us how they want it done, then I say we're done. You don't need any more review. If anything is different, and I, I know Johansson kinda wants to talk about future maintenance, well, he needs to understand and be convinced that, uh, this is how we do it for everybody. Everybody in the district pays a chunk of the main, cuz they use the main ultimately as their outlet. And people on a lateral pay for that lateral. And that's how we're setting this up, just exactly how we do it when it's all in Iowa.
Yep.
Okay. And if he doesn't, you know, I, I gotta be the pointy-headed lawyer. If he doesn't like it, he doesn't need to use our drainage system. He can run it up north.
So basically, he's, he's gonna have a separate lateral on the main.
Yeah, there, there is Minnesota lateral, so that's what he'd be getting charged for.
He'll be charged on a Minnesota lateral to the main.
And the main.
Yeah. Yeah. It makes sense.
Exactly. I mean, if, if we didn't have the state line involved, that's exactly how we would do it.
Correct.
Yep.
Yeah.
Do you guys have any questions or thoughts, concerns?
So today, you would want a motion from us to approve a tentative agreement with the Minnesota landowners?
Is, is that what you're looking for, Dan?
What, what do you think, Jim?
Yes. If, if Johansson doesn't agree with what Dan and Kyle and I and other board members have suggested today, then we'll have to bring it back to the board for review.
Okay.
You're gonna have to sign off until you're comfortable, Roger.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I know that.
Well, they're not, we're not ready to sign it again.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we're, we wouldn't be ready to sign it today. I would say it'd just be the concept is on the right track.
So we could get something cause the board by next week, or eighty, or in two weeks, either way. Do you want Johansson to sign first, or do you wanna sign it?
Why don't we give you permission to do an agreement with Johansson, and then it'll be brought back to the board to approve it?
Yeah.
That, that makes the most sense.
I would.
So I, um, I would make a motion that we have our attorney, Mr. Hudson, draw up an agreement with Johansson to be brought back to the board for approval.
You wanna say finalize the agreement? Cuz he's already got it drawn up.
We'll just do it that way, and we'll finalize it when we.
I'll second that.
I don't know, maybe Johansson should sign it first, and we know it's done, right?
But we're the ones, we're the drivers, so, but.
Yeah, I like Jack's suggestion too, that way, and then when we approve it, it's done, cuz then.
Yeah, that's true.
Then the, then the attorney can.
Now, against the deadline with, uh, concerns of how long our bid letter's looking for.
Correct.
Okay.
So we should do it, maybe if you can have it by next Tuesday, it'd be good.
You don't have a meeting next.
Well, we don't have a meeting on Tuesday, that's right.
We don't have a meeting next Tuesday, so we'll have to have it in two weeks.
What is the, what is the deadline date?
Well, that'd be, wouldn't that be four weeks from the bid letting at our next meeting?
Only, only take a minute and look that up here.
So if we, if we voted to move forward with the agreement like we're talking, is that good enough to go forward with the project and keep things moving that way?
The project is separate from the determination from the Minnesota in some respects. Cuz if they wanna do the projects, they're gonna do the project.
Wow, yeah.
I guess it all depends upon the money come from Minnesota.
Yeah.
Kyle was saying that this was regardless of what Johansson, uh, is back here.
I mean, for the most part, yes, but their money was the factor, and it was one of the factors in it.
Sure. But I don't know, I mean, I, my, I guess my understanding from day one was that none of the landowner, none of the Iowa landowners were gonna be interested unless Johansson's were in it.
That could be correct, but we can't really for okaying a project with money that might come from Minnesota, it makes the whole thing a little bit convoluted. Go ahead, see if they can get that done with Johansson.
Picked it up with him two weeks, that's gonna make everybody's deadline a bit.
I mean, she'll, when did we do the?
Dan, have you, have you calculated that date yet?
That was two weeks ago.
I think it was.
Yeah. Still with it then.
They re- made to get a quote on plastic tile, and that happened two weeks ago, didn't it?
Correct. That was two weeks ago.
That paper doesn't have.
Good for thirty days.
Yeah. We should be good by two days.
By November.
No, August, August twenty-third.
Yeah. September.
Yeah.
Twenty. We're within the thirty days.
Yeah, so it'd be four weeks on the dot.
Yep.
But twentieth of September would be the fourth Tuesday.
She got twenty-eight days. So it's a thirty-day period. We should, we're good.
Should be okay.
Chris never complained if it's a day or two off.
Kyle, do I have a second to the motion?
I, I did.
Okay. Do you wanna, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Alright.
Opposed, motion carried, so go ahead. Get her done.
Um, good, good job, guys.
You need anything else, Dan?
Nope, that oughta do it.
Okay, make sure you put them other five acres in, that way we have it in there.
Yep.
Got it.
Thank you, guys.
Do we think Johansson's gonna keep that to this week still?
Yes. I think so.
Dan, I'm out of the office all day Thursday this week.
We're, we're gonna continue with our meeting. If you guys wanna talk or whatever later on, that's perfectly fine, but we got a couple other things here. Okay, sounds good. Thank you both. Bye.
Well, now we're after drainage repairs. I got one question. Like, when, who pays Hudson on this drainage district? Who take, who pays for Hudson for this called the drainage district?
Drainage district, yeah.
Specifically for that. If it's a general discussion with the board, then the board may, with the drainage history, pays for.
Yeah, it's for, for this project specifically.
That's jeans.
Yep.
Did they get hold of it, or did he, did he actually?
He did, in the private, private drain. Drain nine is the trustee during his history. I gave him the trustee.
Yeah, he's been talking to me. He goes, well, you bypassed it, so why don't we just leave the person busting, I said, you, who's the people on the other end of it?
Yeah.
Oh, I never thought of that, but we just put two mains alongside that main. I don't care, you're still gonna pay for it.
Oh, my gosh. Okay.
So it is the trustee, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I had one drainage request from Jane Thompson. It's in Lots Creek. They had a large hole. Yeah, I told Jane to fix it, so being taken care of, so Jane's been. Kyle, you had a couple?
Yeah. Forty-two is from Phil Birdy to, um, install cattle crossing on four, like the one for dieterings. And forty-three is from Darlene Ray, and I'm, I'll have to go talk to him, cuz I'm not sure if this is on drain four or lateral eleven. Then eighty-four, but I'm not sure if it's the main open ditch or lateral eleven. It looks like lateral eleven, and they're still in the project right now, so I'm not sure, but I'll check that out today. Well, actually, both of them are still in the project, so I mean, I don't know if there's really anything to do here, but.
Assuming that the contractor has leveled the spoils, that's what it looks like.
On, on the open ditch on four, I know they're long ways past that on leveling stuff out initial stuff, but on lateral eleven, I'm not sure the status there, so.
I don't think it happened while they started yet on eleven.
I, I'm not a percent sure either.
I. Last time I looked, they hadn't yet, so.
But either way, they're both in the middle of projects, neither of them have completed yet, so I guess, what do we need to do about that?
Um.
Send it to the engineer?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll figure out which project it's for, cuz that determines who it's in the engineering firm, but.
You should've told Dan if it started on it.
Yeah, I'll, I'll ask him.
Yeah, call Dan if that's, if they haven't started on it, then it's gotta be four.
But.
Ray's got.
The main open ditch doesn't go into section eighteen at all.
It doesn't?
No.
But Ray's got ground on four there.
Yeah, they have, they have ground along both.
Yeah.
To me, I think it's along the open ditch, but I don't, don't know for sure. I'll drive back there and look at it.
I've had people tell me the wrong section number.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it, it could be the wrong section number.
Yeah.
No, I've just, just saying. Uh, do I have a motion for the supervisors to handle their request?
So move.
Motion by plan, backed up by. Or the other way around, whoever wants to.
Casey made the motion.
Any more discussion on, uh, drainage repairs? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carried unanimously.
I got a question on drainage, Mr. Scheckler. I was told last week that I was wrong, it's if I'm wrong, I'm wrong, I'll deal with, I mean, I'm a big enough man. You told me that section of Calers was done. I was there yesterday, and I have pictures of drainage pipes laying all over.
You told me that section of Calers was done. I was there yesterday and I have pictures of drainage pipes laying all over. Had you seen him catching you right down there last night, turned around by the bridge and come back?
Yeah, I did.
Why are the pipes still out there? They'd like to know why them pipes should go out there.
I'll have to ask.
A's and that one, that old one right by the bridge, that wasn't good enough shape, that's why you didn't replace that, Greg.
Yeah, the engineers are keeping everything that is.
Diesel?
Yeah, a-anything that does not need to be replaced is staying.
Like I said, I'm told it's completely gone and.
As far as pipes being installed.
It links like wireline pipes to other, yeah, this project's done, I already get them out of there. So I'm just.
Well, you know, I, I didn't say cleanup was done, but I said the pipes were installed through there.
Where they got the long reach, south of there, she's still putting stuff in. About a mile south of there, he's got the long reach sitting there when you're going east and west on that road, you know, you go past the
curve and.
Yeah, on the south side, he's got his long reach set, I thought that was all done.
Oh, that, he had. Yeah, that, that would've been for the cattle crossing.
Thank you, Mike, appreciate it.
Jeff was, that labor complaint. With when?
Okay.
So the rest of them signed for, he's representing landowners in drain four, it doesn't affect this one at all. Yeah, that's.
Six. And then.
Thank you.
We are up to, wanna do supervisor report before we do the audit group? Or the other way around?
Well, man, we can have her go first.
First, go ahead, today's your day.
Okay, um, is anybody aware of a policy that the courthouse has about animals on the property?
Animals on property?
Yeah, like in the courthouse. Yes, lately, we've had quite a few dogs in the courthouse. And the other day, we had a great dane in the elevator, and none of them have been unleashed. And, um, had a circumstance up on the courthouse where the dog was unleashed. Person was spilling out something at the table outside the clerk's office and the dog was looking like it was gonna come up to her several times and it was a big dog and it made her nervous and anxious and she is wa- was wondering if we had a policy and I said, not that I'm aware of, but maybe that was something we needed to discuss. Uh, I know a lot of places allow service animals. I didn't know if that was something we wanted to put on the agenda or I just don't want anybody to get bitten or there being any problems.
I think it would be appropriate that we have a policy that all service dogs will be on a lead.
So I think.
Leash.
For next week to talk about that.
Maybe some could ask Todd to see if there's any. State rules.
I did send him, believe. So many emails I can't remember, but I think I sent him an email that I saw asking.
Yeah, and if you, can we restrict it to only service dog? Yeah, that, that look into that. I don't think we need other dogs in the courthouse.
Okay.
I don't think you can restrict a service dog, but.
At least if they're on leash, then that one has some control.
Even airlines, that gives a guy that has a service dog on a trip, I asked her about. She says no airlines, uh, after what's your brain, they just have no charge, they have to let you lay right by your feet.
We all love dogs, we just, I just don't have it. Because we don't have dogs, yeah, we love dogs. Um, okay.
You ever seen a Hy-Vee?
Hy-Vee, yeah.
That's, that's not right. I'm versus one thing, but Hy-Vee, no, you don't need a dog in.
I think when you were changing election workers that in West, East last year, I can't remember where. Somebody said that a guy came in with a dog on his shoulders and bowled. And the dog stayed there the whole time he moved it. Thought that was very interesting. Okay, other thing. Already captured that election email. Okay, then there's this from Phil Alberts, um, it's a fifty dollar claim that he turned in, it's from Cassuth County EMS Association. Um, but the address he wants the checks sent to is his Hall Street address. And so I guess, before I had this paid, I wanted to ask you guys about it. I, I'm not.
I don't think he sent it to the Hall Street address because that's like paying our own money back to ourselves.
I guess my question is, is the EMS Association different than what he does for the county? Are they two separate things? Okay, so then if they are, then this should be sent to whatever address is the EMS Association, correct?
It might be out at the hospital, but I'm not sure.
Okay.
That's, and they may have changed that too, but I know, I know it was out at the hospital previously. Uh, or they had meetings and stuff out there anyway, but I don't, I don't know for sure.
Okay, and then the, what he's invoicing for is county dues and trailer dues, so is the county paying dues to the EMS Association?
Cause right now, the city is the EMS Association.
EMS Association would be independent from the city even.
It would be, but the city's still in charge of EMS. They just hired itself. See what, um, as we got pillow pocket there.
Okay. I just. Okay.
Figure it out.
Okay.
But yeah, I have the same problem sending it to that address.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that it being two, less two separate entities that were not using using a, a county address.
As I'm concerned, we hired Phil to oversee the EMS.
Yeah.
It's still the city with all the.
We can talk to you.
Yeah, we'll talk it, so.
Because before, we looked at, it was Brian's, Brian's address and Bert. That's another, whatever, that we sent him to Brian.
Whoever headed the EMS.
Yeah.
Which wouldn't be Phil. Thank you.
Unless, unless he has the head of it now, I don't.
Did the city hire Penn or something with EMS?
I thought, yeah, Penn.
But he was in charge of the city and Phil's in charge of the county, wasn't he?
Yeah, but the association's not through either.
They should be separate.
They had something on their email this morning, something about they're gonna vote on EMS tonight being essential. But I heard the city's got some meeting tonight.
I don't know.
All the city council?
Yeah, something on that. They were gonna have something tonight at the city council meeting for, it said something about EMS as a central service, I thought. Isn't that what the election was?
Are they doing something independent of ours?
That's what didn't make sense to me. I thought that's what the election next week's about, or no? Yeah, I was lost on that one.
Hey, then reminder, no meeting next week because we have this special election for the, I'll go in and go to school this street.
We're gonna have a draw. We'll have a draw, not going to give a meeting.
Yeah, yeah, well, it's kinda hard to be in two places at once. So we want, have a meeting next week. And then, as you've noticed, the roofers are finally here, um, finally getting our roof done. Um, hopefully the weather holds out so they can get it done in a week.
It's raining, you know, the way.
Yeah, it's talking rain Friday, Saturday, Friday, Friday night.
Oh, that'll be nice, and then, um, the road out here will be tore up a little bit and Hall Street will be tore up. They're gonna be redoing the entrance into the parking lot also. So there will be, it's not even, the whole parking lot will be closed, but I don't know what that date will be. We were just hoping it wouldn't be while they're fixing growth, so.
Is people gonna park? Hopefully they get this street done before the taxes are due, cause a lot of people parking up there.
It's not supposed to take very long and then we're taking, the county's taking out the sidewalks and re-goring the sidewalks. So, um, that will be handling.
The Trump sidewalk, yeah, that guy did it, or this.
They, and they figured now that the curb is coming out, it's the time to replace the sidewalk, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, and then that's all that I have.
It's already in that book.
Yeah, that's Wednesday, right? I'm so mixed up on my days because we learned earlier today, but yeah, that is tomorrow. And on the twentieth, I guess we have the fog confinement for Springfield twenty-four site.
Was it the computer today? It was on the computer today and the computer.
Yeah.
You found it?
No, it's in the.
It was in the packet, it just wasn't on the agenda.
He went above the packet where there's Doug and this and this, and he could punch in, there's a Springfield.
It was there.
But that's, that's a warning, it was there, but it wasn't on the paper, wasn't on the agenda.
Probably, or Christine might have put it in on the. And maybe it was even to my skin. Okay, that's how I am.
So next week, we're not gonna be here.
Well, you can come if you want, but.
Will be lonesome or something.
Yeah.
Kyle, well, you have anything last week?
Yeah, I had their judicial district meeting over in Sioux City, um, their director's reports had a paper here with supervision levels per county, had that all broken down, right, like I guess we're, I would say we're comparable to some of our neighbors and stuff. Um, maybe even a little bit lower. Um, probably the highlight of the meeting, there was quite a bit of discussion around it, was, um, around drug courts and a, um, drug court officer for those which officer we hire and run through this, uh, Department of Corrections. Over in Clay and Dickinson, they have judges that are willing and interested in wanting to set up a drug court over there. Right now, we currently have drug courts in Woodbury and Clement. Which, Woodbury has a, a huge caseload compared to everyone else. But that's Sioux, most of Sioux City. Um, so the, the conversation around Dickinson and Clay starting it up was the cost for this other position. Which we have enough local funds, um, from supervision income to do that and carry that, and there's not really any issues there, but basically the conversation rev- revolved around, how can we expand this and get this out to other places? Because so far it has been very successful in the areas that it's been used. So, um, John Fluss was the one from Emmett that was there and we were talking about trying to meet with our judges, sheriffs, county attorneys and stuff and see what we can do, because the three of us for Cassuth, Emmett, Powalto would have pretty much identical caseload to what Dickinson and Clay would have. So if they have one position for those two counties, we could potentially have one for our three and expand that out, so. Otherwise, went over financials, set pretty good that way, a lot of the budget estate funding, so.
Mr. Casey?
Oh, it's several, several calls on that pipeline. And after the meeting, I'm gonna call it, I gotta call, uh, Barry Simpson, I think I called my landlord, uh, Arndifer and another one, cause they are on there that says that they signed. And I am pretty sure they did not sign, and then when I find out from them, then I'm gonna call that Christine Paradise that sent that email to Tammy and ask her where she got her information until it's false.
So that's, that exhibit H is not saying who signed up.
The email that she sent us from Tammy says, anybody in the red has gave easement. It was right there. Bunch of Tammy's email, on Thursday, on the CO2 pipeline. And it says, anybody in the red has signed easement and, the people out.
Uh, Thursday, that came, Thursday CO2 from Tammy.
Has been obtained.
Yeah, in the red, and then you punch on the map and those people are not signed. I was shocked.
I thought that was, I thought that was exhibit H.
Her email says, and pass just the updated Cassuth County patch showing easements obtained by Summit Carbon.
Oh, and that. There you go, second. Yeah, so Casey, you've got an easement signed already. Um, my two of the farms, I farmed, yeah, yeah, which I guarantee you, that, that's not signed. He was definitely.
But see, that, the heading on there is exhibit H, and that's not what exhibit H is, so I don't know. I don't know why she put that in the text of her email, but that's not an exhibit H. Exhibit H is the ones they're requesting eminent domain for, so it's. The very top heading of that page, it says, Sub and Carbon Summit Carbon Solutions LLC, Exhibit H, Cassuth County Overview Map.
Well, I said right in here, note that the red indication easement has been obtained.
Yeah, it's, that's not the case. Exhibit H is their request for eminent domain. So that's the people that are dropped dead, guaranteed they won't even respond to the company for the most part. That's what everyone else has kinda said, it's, and there's, there's others that will say they have agreed to easement, but if they still answer the phone, they won't request eminent domain yet.
Why are some in black and some in blue?
For the names. I don't know.
I didn't know if it.
Probably just to.
Cause Dirk Silver, he's in blue and he's in black, and in black again.
Probably just so they're not all overlapping on each other.
And then they skip like Wildens and this and this, he's definitely against it.
But if he keeps answering the phone, they'll keep trying to talk him into it. Or if he visits with them in person, who knows, but that's definitely a request for eminent domain.
What, exhibit H?
Exhibit H is requesting eminent domain through the IB.
It should have a lot more names on there then, cause you go into the east then, and it's, uh. Here's the.
That's, yeah, that's definitely not easements. Not from everything I've been told.
Dennis Frieders. Yeah, it does jump on the north side of that creek, Roger. It goes around the county pit. At, uh, where it says one seventieth street.
He's got, they got a jet.
It's on four, it's about four mile creek, then drops back in.
Yeah, they even got it jetting a little further over there.
Now, like I said, I was gonna call and talk or see what. I'm, I'm gonna call the people first, so I got my ducks in a row, I don't wanna fuck misspoken. Got a couple questions on little wind towers, I just told them. Is there, they're out for drugs. I had a guy tell me fucking the cement trucks ain't stopping, he about got hit two or three times. I told him, you contact Doug Miller, he's the engineer, he's the one that shows in contact with them. He was gonna get a hold of Doug then. This is, Doug does call him and normally he gets, they, they talk to the people real quick. I know they did on the last job.
Yeah.
They saw cameras set up, I hate those too.
Don't see any wire now. And now, this one, this is a different outfit. They have a sign in front of every high line wire that warns you how high the wire is with the actual.
Voltage.
The sheet above that.
Yeah, they got those up there too.
See, I thought last time they didn't have them. But different outfit.
Well, if this map is accurate, you're doomed as far as doing anything.
Yeah. Yeah. It's not accurate though.
Well, I, I would say it's probably accurate to what it's representing, because it's not representing.
The reds are for eminent domain, they got a lot of eminent domains everywhere, yeah.
I know a lot of people that's.
Yeah, there's.
Yeah.
I think some of them signed it. And they're red. I thought the only names they released are the people that signed it.
That's what's possibly.
That's, that was my understanding.
So you could read it. You could read it, and then you know if your neighbor signs, then you'd think, okay, maybe I should sign because they sign. But they're putting wrong names down. That's why my landlord called me a week and a half ago to see. I didn't sign. I got my name on that list, and I did not sign.
I could be wrong, but I, from what I've been told, I'm pretty sure that exhibit H is an eminent domain request.
Last Tuesday, Barry Simpson called me, he wanted to know why all his neighbors were stabbing him in the back, and I go, what do you mean? They're on that list. They told me they didn't. I said, my neighbor, my landlord did not sign.
I don't know. Not the way I, that I read this map, so. Anything else, Mr. Casey?
See. Next Monday, I got, I got. Think I'll tell you about that, uh, oh.
Jack? Right, hey, I didn't have nothing last week. Tammy, you got anything else?
Yeah.
I'll declare the meeting adjourned at ten-twenty.
Oh, Tammy?
Well.
My question's to Derek.
He still has the owl on, as long as the owl's on, we're not gonna talk about anything.
On a back egg, can we talk about that? Getting old. What better happen, I think? He was at the farm with me on Saturday and Sunday, so I had to go on a pump character with him. So I grabbed the first one, she's like, is that heavy?
Yeah.
Let me help you, so she grabbed half, and I grabbed half, then they get lighter. Come down all the time.
Yeah, what's that?
I think I'm coming back, I'll talk to you.
Okay, sounds good. Yeah, I'll be here. I thought we lived managed. That'd be interesting.
Well, we got those managed, yeah.
What?
Don't run your wheels a lot.
Yeah, that's good, I'm already wobbly.